Hi Tara. I'm practicing.
Hello. It works.
And our mics work. Everyone practice.
Hello. Oh, yeah.
They do.
You guys got your cheat sheets? You all set? Okay. All right. All right. We'll make sure you guys are well equipped. All right, shall we? Never. Same. We're trying to crack the code on it. Yes, you haven't seen that again. All right, let's call this to order. It's six o'clock on the nose. So let's call this to order. The zoning Board of Appeals meeting on May 6, 2021. Let me start with the call to order, first of all, and then I'll do roll call. What do we, who are we missing? Do we have Ryan on Zoom? I don't see him. So we just, who's present here today, it looks like?
Tyler's there.
Tara's online.
I'm zooming in.
All right, Tara plus us five. All right, so we're in good shape to move forward. The minutes. Anybody have a chance to peruse the minutes? Any comments, questions, additions? About a motion?
I read them.
Yeah.
The only thing is, so I did come in late, but the second motion I was part of, so. Yeah, I'd mean like that. So just fix my name somehow. So reflects that I was there. That's all. But you did put that I voted. It's just my name is different. So I moved to adopt with those changes.
With already showing up at the.
I second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from April, say hi.
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 Okay, good. And I must say, the minutes were very thorough, by the way.
Yeah.
Very copious notes. I liked it, so.
I was like, there's a new spin on the minutes here. A good one.
So let me read the preamble here before we get started on the, any old business or new business. The zoning Board of Appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variance ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant if a variance is not granted. So in determining whether or not to grant the variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The board further hears applications where it is alleged that an administrative official erred in a final order requirement or decision based on or made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance, which we've done previously as well. The zoning Board of Appeals does not create zoning nor can it change zoning. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Matters brought before the zoning Board of Appeals are to be concerned only with variances from development standards placed on property by the zoning ordinance. Final decisions of the zoning Board of Appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision here is rendered. I don't think there's any organizational and procedural items. No? Okay, unfinished business? None of that? All right, so let's go to new business. We have case ZBA 21-13, Cheryl and Eric Christiansen, homeowners at 5200 Redfield Court, Dunwoody, Georgia, 30338, request a variance from Chapter 27, Section 58 to encroach into the street and rear setbacks for the construction of home additions. Staff, will you walk us through your assessment?
So the only case on the agenda tonight is ZBA 21-13, 5200 Redfield Court. The applicant requests to make improvements to their existing home within the front and rear setbacks. This is the site plan. The shaded areas show the proposed improvements along the front of the home. The applicant proposes a covered porch, which extends six feet into the street setback. In the backyard, the applicant proposes to extend the existing porch six feet into the rear setback and also construct a side entry garage, which will extend 13 feet into the rear setback. Overall, the proposed improvements will add approximately 1,000 square feet of impervious for a total of 6,500 square feet, which is well below the maximum allowed of 7,800 square feet. As you can see on the plan, the house has an unusual orientation. It sits sort of catty corner on the lot, giving it very little room for improvements or additions. These are some photos illustrating the existing conditions on the site. The top left is just the front of the home. As you can see, the entire property sort of slopes downwards to their neighbors towards the left. The bottom left is just showing the existing driveway and garage. And the two photos on the right-hand side are showing the backyard. The photo in the bottom left is standing where the garage would be built, looking towards the neighbor to the rear. So as I stated before, this house has an unusual orientation, and this is a fairly unique condition for this neighborhood. There's only about three other properties in this entire, you know, 200-plus subdivision that have this type of orientation, where it sits diagonal on the home, or excuse me, on the lot. Were the home to have been built in a more traditional manner, sort of straight on, then it would have had, you know, sufficient room to make these types of improvements, and they would have fit within the buildable area. But unfortunately, it is not. Due to this unique condition, staff does see this as a practical difficulty, and given the fact that if it were reoriented, it would fit within the buildable area, we do find that this would be, you know, would not grant them any special privileges that they wouldn't have otherwise. So for these reasons, we are recommending approval, subject to these two conditions, essentially tying them to their site plan and just requiring them to use this variance within one calendar year. That's all I have for you guys this evening.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any representatives from the Christiansens here to speak on behalf and tell the board your personal story and an application?
Yes, I'm Cheryl, not Eric. And I do have a personal kind of a sob story. Madeline, can you tell me how to switch your, down to the slide you let me put in? I didn't want to give you a really good sob story. I was just. So.
Not the children.
Yeah.
That's how my family looked in 1998. That was two years after we bought our home. But now, we look, we look, did I just pass over it?
Yeah, the wedding photo?
Yeah. Well, anyway, there's 12 of us now, and that's without grandchildren. So my house is kind of a weird floor plan. I don't know if you guys know the Dunwoody four, four and five, four and a door, but we have the kitchen on the front. So it's kind of unusual, not unusual in Winter Hall, Redfield, Dunwoody Club, Forest, some in Withmere, and some in the Village Mill. But it's where you put your kitchen on the front, and it's a galley. And I have a slide for it, but I, can you switch this to where I could look at all of them at once? You know what I mean? Where you do like a thumbnail, and I can just show them the ones I want to show them? You don't know how. Yeah, this, this will help me. So I drew my own little diagram for you guys, which is a horrible picture. The last slide? Okay. So. Is it? Double click. Okay, so can you see this down in the bottom right? That's my floor plan. So the kitchen is in the front, and it's really not wide enough for an island. You can't do a peninsula, and behind you is the garage. So virtually every person who didn't have five children has already afforded to go into the garage and do the plan that we're proposing. So the only way to get a bigger square open thing is to either go out the front or out the back. So our proposal is, I mean, it's kind of reasonable. This is a, HDTV has changed the taste of every person on earth. Everybody wants open floor plan. You really can't do it because the garage blocks your camp. I'm really sorry, my mask is coming down. So I want to show you just a little bit about my neighbors. Double click. So you can see pretty much everybody who has my floor plan and has also had money, which that's the difference right now. My baby just graduated from Auburn a week ago. So now I can try and make a house big enough for my new family. But you can see there's one, and there's one. People are building the second garage. It's kind of the only way to do it. So I can show you a dozen pictures of other people with different orientations. They build this separate garage where they connect it, but it's always another garage. So I don't even need garage, really. I'm glad to park on my driveway. But anyway, are both those slides up there? Yeah, they are. And then here's a couple more that are similar. So you can see down in that cul-de-sac, it's a separate garage. It's just their lot was a little bit different, so they could do it. And here is across the street from my house, where you see my yellow sign. The people across the street, they expanded their garage and went into the garage with their kitchen, but rather than building a new garage, their lot was such in their back entry, they just pushed a separate little garage. So there's several people that have done that, too. At any rate, I'm going to show you one more thing. So this is a satellite view of our neighborhood, and you can see we're 5200. You can see. So if you see where Redfield Terrace is and Redfield Court, we're right at that corner. So can you guys see that? I wish I could have like a little cursor. Well, it's the red, the red dot is us. So you can see that because of the angle of our house, anything that we do is also going to not make our house look extraordinary big because we're not going to be out of line with our neighbors who are kind of around the corner. And our other neighbors, I took a picture of this so you guys could see. We have a, okay, so this, this is where my garage would sit. My new garage, I'd be standing in it. And you can see, my house is not going to come out past theirs. So I know one of the concerns that y'all must have is you don't want ginormous houses that make the lines go bad. But because my house is at an angle, we're not going to have that issue. Let me see if there's anything else I really want to tell you. I don't want to bore you. On the other hand, I don't want to not say enough. It's so confusing. But we have put notices in every neighbor's mailbox, and we have taken our site plan to all of our neighbors. And I know that Madeline sent a notice to everybody and said she didn't get any comments. But we also got comments from neighbors. So we had verbal people who really wish us well. And then these are text messages, I think, from older people who don't know how to do QR codes. And one even handwrote on the back of the little flyer that we put in their mailbox. But this is something in line with Redfield. It's something that's normal in our community. We specifically chose a builder who's done a lot in Redfield. And if I go back to this, you can see Donna Henderson Interiors. She lives in the neighborhood. She has designed most of the houses that have looked like mine. She's done this exact plan for other neighbors with this, just a different lot orientation. And she does beautiful work, and the homes are tastefully done. And she's had some that have sold for outrageous amount of money. So she's, you know, she's good. We wanted our neighbors to feel comfortable, so we've really gone to the effort of making sure that no one, everyone knew what we wanted. We wanted them all to be able to comment to you. I have three positive comments, lots of verbal, really kind things. I love my neighborhood. We're Dunwoody people. We have four generations of my family who are homeowners in Dunwoody. Well, the babies don't own yet, but my parents, my generation, there's three of my siblings. They're all Dunwoody people. I have, I have two children, both daughters, that one lives in Winter Hall, one lives at Mount Vernon, and for a map right by the high school, you guys fixed her yard for her when you took part of it with the intersection. And we're committed to not only Dunwoody, but our neighborhood. We've been involved since we moved here in the 90s, and we want to stay that way. I don't want to ever use the word that it would be a hardship if we didn't do this because I live in a beautiful home, beautiful neighborhood, beautiful city. But we would like to improve it, and we think it'll be good for Redfield. We think it'll be good for Dunwoody, and we think it'll be good for our family. So. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone online that also wants to speak in favor of the applicant?
Please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, so we'll see if there's anybody in opposition online. I don't think there's anybody in here. But anybody online? I suspect not.
Please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, great. Well, we'll close the open comment and open up the board for questions.
No, you told us stories, but we have no question. The first one is you told us that there are three other houses with the same type of orientation.
Oh, Madeline did. I don't know those houses.
You don't know? Okay, okay. That's okay. I was going to ask you, do you know of any other house, any other houses that kind of look like yours?
They all look like mine. It's funny. They're all built by Coward and Marchman, who were the big builders in the late 70s. I just talked to John Coward, who was born in 1960, and he swept my house when his dad was building it. So I mean, they're all.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, they're all the same, unfortunately.
So, okay, so what could, say a little bit, but the other houses that you might have seen, right?
Right.
I see this is the training that, as you go in through all the other ones. But what have they done similar things as yours with that same orientation?
Madeline, you would know that better than I would.
If you don't, that's fine.
I didn't study the orientation. I know that, you know, she said there's three houses like mine. So it's, you know, I'm just catty corner, so my house doesn't face straight. So you can kind of see, like, if I add a front porch, I'm going over in the north, northwest corner of my house, but I'm not going over the variance on the other part of my front porch.
And I'll tell you where I'm going. Good presentation, by the way. But so one of the things that I think about when I'm thinking about granting it or not is whether you're in a situation that's different than others that causes you to have to come in front of us because of the way your house is. Although I want your house to look better, and I want the whole neighborhood to look better, right? And you're in a unique situation where your house has a couple of things from what I've seen, and you can correct me. First of all, the house orientation is different than most other houses. So they could do, the second thing is, there are hills or drops in your house that prevents you from moving forward or even moving a certain way.
Yes.
So you're kind of forced to be in a certain section to do anything that you would have.
That's very true.
And the other thing is that where everybody else would have the proper land to do it, the house was in a certain way, you can't because of the orientation of the house, right?
That is true.
So thus, that's where I'm trying to bring your hardship, right? I'm trying to ask you if you had, that's why I had to ask if you had seen what others, people in similar things have done. How are you different than others?
Well, another way that I'm different, other than what you just said, so there's a very steep drop off. I actually drive in down into my garage. So there is a significant drop off from the street level to my garage, which caused terror in my neighbors when my children started backing up their driveway. But because you, it's blind. You come up to the top, you can barely stop at the top. So it's a steep drop off down. There's just very little flat in my yard at all. It basically runs like this all the way down. I'm not the low point because my neighbor Martha Riley is lower than I am. So one is the topography. I have a steep drop, I have a drop to the front. I have a drop from the street level down end. And I also have two streets. So my house is at a corner, which means I have a front street variance on two sides. So, and what I consider my backyard is kind of like my side yard and my backyard. So my neighbors, just where I showed you where their garage is, they're, they're my closest neighbor. I really kind of sit all by myself. I can show you a picture that I took to show you that behind my house, when you're in like the upstairs bathroom, I can't see anybody out the back of anybody's houses because I'm looking down at the backyard of all my neighbors. So it's a hardship, not for me. I mean, it's a very private house. Anything that I do, people won't be able to see it because there's nobody back there, which you can kind of see it on this. Can you see that the back of my house just faces a bunch of trees that are in the backyard?
I'm sorry, what?
Double click.
Oh, okay. Well, it's, I'm showing you the, the map where you see Redfield Terrace and Redfield Court. So you can see that the back of my house, you see those trees in the center? That's the back of my yard. So I don't look into anybody's windows. Nobody looks into mine. Nobody sees into my backyard. The closest thing I have is the Millses, who live just to the north of me on Redfield Court. And it's just their garage. They don't have windows, my garage. So my new garage would theoretically face towards them. But I do have two, two streets that I think, I hate to use the word hardship because it just seems so.
Use it, use it.
Like rich person problems, though. It's a hardship for me because I can't improve my home at all. Like, basically, I'm going to have to pick up and move because I can't have all of my children in one room. I have little chopped up rooms and a kitchen that, hey, I cooked for five kids, you know, seven people every single night. It's a galley. My kitchen is, it's this long, and it's like this wide. And you should see my four daughters in there. We are all over each other. I want to stay. My children live in Dunwoody. My business is at Spaghetti Junction. We've lived here for 25 years. We've worked at Dunwoody Days, we've had Lemonade Days, you know, Boy Scout troops, Girl Scout troops, PTOs. You know, this is our spot. We don't want to go, but our house can't be improved. And guess what? Anybody who buys our house, they're not going to want it because they can't do this either. They can't get a kitchen out of this house, and virtually every person who has my floor plan but a different, not hardship, lot, they can do this. Anybody can do this. I just can't.
Yeah, I suspected the builder at the time, whether it was, I guess it wasn't Coward was the other one. Still in place on the lot, they could build it, right? There's topography, whatever. I mean, they didn't purposely make it diagonal, whatever. It was a funky lot, so they put it where they had to put it.
Exactly. I need another house, and this works. So let me just do it.
But I can empathize with that. I live in John Coward's house. He lived and built our house and lived in it, in Dunwoody Station. Yeah, yeah. And he, so, and he built a galley kitchen because it faces the cul-de-sac. So a lot of people have done this floor plan and done, we all over Dunwoody have done this improvement you're talking about. I've seen it because we've looked at it ourselves, you know? It's very common, and you probably can't do that with your particular situation. So is your, is your new garage going to be, so it's going to be a regular two-car garage? It's just going to use all the? Using the old garage as your kitchen or open den or whatever it's going to be? Yeah. Yeah, be a nice big kitchen. Yeah.
Could I ask the staff one question? A man. Maybe I read it wrong, I thought in the packet originally, you guys, you deny, your recommendation was to deny the back porch variance, but in here it says, okay. I guess I saw an earlier version of the packet.
I did note that because when you orient the house, sort of in a traditional orientation, the back porch still does encroach, so I did comment that it might not meet the minimum relief criteria, but that didn't affect my recommendation of approval.
Alright, thank God, that was a little confusing for me, thank you.
There's something about it being unsafe, or the builder or the contractor thought it needed to be upgraded or replaced anyways, right, to some degree? Any other questions? No motion?
I move to approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 27-58, to allow encroachment of a porch into the street setback and to allow encroachment of a porch and garage into the rear setback, subject to conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by site work surveys and planning and dated October 1, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Tara says aye as well. But it'll be noted that the motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other business, board, any comment on anything, staff, anything we need to address? Alright, a lot of efficiency. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Bye, everybody.